Yes, we have multiple items. Number C, your information. In addition to number three, two presentation by number four, number two. Under letter E, recommendations. Number one, student's consent. Letter five, two person, fifty-five thousand dollars. Or, obviously, no. Based on. Then under. Revised under letter E. Therefore, for. Five thousand dollars. Lost in eight, self-creation. Revised on twenty-five thousand. On a reduction of. For action. Then under letter G, revised also. Five thousand dollars. So, total five. Two purchases, fifty-five thousand dollars. Actually, it's a billion. Lost in the crazy five. Four thousand eight. Trail. All revised first. So, the touch.
Um, so good evening. Um, couple of this top number here is a decision plus that I'd like to mention. But we kind of like to create though. Here's what I'm going to give to the council coordinator. So, trying to get that program running again. And should be a good addition to that. And to be here with me tonight is Kim Russell. Uh, Kim Russell comes to us, uh, from E W S D. Uh, she's going to be our work-based department coordinator. Uh, so she's going to be working with the area high school. Uh, working with cost classes, internships, uh, trying to. Not only ready for the high school, but their post-high school. Where, uh, can remember different ways.
If I can have Allison come down. Uh, so I have one staff member to introduce you. Uh, this is Allison Morning. She is simply our sister's local position. Uh, so she'll be providing students her services to students who have. She also helps with the mixed teacher mission, which is, uh, for home students. Um, plus a lot of other duty services. She'll become a manager and all those kind of things. So, Allison, she has ten years in Colorado, um, working at the. That school, kind of a small community. So, still leaves them about three hundred, three hundred and fifty students. And then she spent here about four years. Uh, providing private services, uh, to both communities. So, we're really excited to have her on board. She's been trying to get with the district. I think from almost big one, I was looking up history and she's applied for. And she applied for high school government. So, there's really some remaining, uh, in the district. And I accept that that we.
Um, they think how this is really exciting to introduce them here tonight. Um, first we have Miss Jamie Primer. And she is teaching first grade for us. Uh, she received an award in tennis and her bachelor's degree in chess. Went on to get her master's degree in. Um, this is her sixth year teaching. All have been in kindergarten to this first grade. Been married for just over a year and she's old. Uh, her parents were videoers and she had a bunch of friends in chess. Um, really interesting fact is she has, her grandpa is going to be a hundred and twenty-two years old. On October first. So, very, very cool fact. Um, he's also a veteran of more and more. Uh, next we have Miss Lady Beth O'Furd. And she did her super teaching here, correct? Uh, so she's homeless in the area. Originally though, from Eva, Colorado. She graduated from the university center. And she's one of four siblings here, all of them. And she's always loved being around kids. She grew up in a very large family. She's very excited to be second graders this year and she's going to learn alongside her students. Um, and interesting fact, I have got to teach her cousins and he moved to go in. Out of any connection. And the third one is Diana Niski. She comes from us, to us from Casper. She grew up there. She was a teacher, gave music at U D F. Um, she's been engaged to Connor and they have an opportunity to shepherd it. And she, her family still lives in Casper. She has three siblings. Her mom's staying in high school. And she owns a player piano that was built in nineteen fifty-six. So, uh, they're already going to set up a really tight relationship. Welcome to family.
That, with the. That, probably all of you could be. She grew up in Florence. That's where she was born in high school. She attended Easton, Wyoming College. Then went on to Stanford College. Her degree. Three health facilities. After graduation. And she speaks more than three days, bowl Nebraska. About six years. Now it's continuous.
Yeah.
Um, so I just, what I handed out to you, the first one has like, it's kind of a whole form that kids get. It's not a Google form that I attached to you in canvas something. And then that way goes back to Google sheet. And so they're able to take the data and separate it by grade level when they answer the question, what is the current grade? Um, and then they can get the email, they both resolve that if they want to. So, the first sheet has everything in the main table paper. And it gives you a couple of examples of what they look like. Uh, some things that I wanted to highlight that I think have made it successful for us is, um. We established as staff and non-negotiables that we said we were going to do, we were going to hold each other accountable to. And so one of the things was we said every teacher and every student will participate. It doesn't matter if you teach P E or whatever, every student, every teacher will totally be on board. And so we paired teachers together, um, some of them were a trio depending on where they were. There were kids that had a college class. That for offhand, we did, um, who happens to be one of them. They came back at different times and they still took the test, launched the test here. Every kid, a hundred percent, and every teacher participated without question. Um, nobody even had to opt out. Uh, we also came into this understanding that a fixed figure, or being on that science question, the science thing, we're going to be like. For a math, one of the math tests, it was going to blow their minds. But we had a big family, we came in and we said, hey, we understand that this is going to be hard. Like, we know it's going to be hard. It's going to be hard for some of the twelve graders or less graders, fifth graders. It's going to be worse than math questions that I hear you have never seen before. And we're not asking you to be perfect, but we're asking you to give us perfect effort every week. So, if you got one left me on math, because next time you get a math, you know what you have to do. That will revolve, you know, it's only to be broke. And it can't be like exponential, but we definitely just broke. Um, and then, uh, if there were kids who we've answered that we didn't feel like we're taking it seriously and just asking you different questions. We invited them in for remediation. And we gave them a free parental test and we sat down with them and we looked at them, who they understood that what we were doing and the primary rating had to mean. And it's not only about either education, but it's something that schools really needed to do. And so, so that happened about one or two days, then all of them stayed, now we can start saving grades. So, that was pretty cool. Uh, we also were able to separate the data by grade level. Because we can't really compare the grade, how the baby's born to then tend for them. So, we could look at it that way. Um, and it was really easy to move to the most use because when I said, so during my sixth grade and all the sixth graders doing that word. Uh, we had really good feedback from the students. If I marked math and they're wrong and they thought it was wrong, I had like twenty-six students that I got wondering why they didn't, or they weren't seeing. So, that was like they were really caught into it. Uh, this year, one of the things we're going to add eventually is a primer. The new feedback we got was that his one child, we have to gauge himself because the A T C has time. So, we are going to figure out how to add a primer in there. We kind of helped that too well. Uh, we also have a whole name of A T C test strategy that everybody went over with their kids of first grade. So, like last year, it was like Mrs. Estes, Mr. Duffer, myself. We took it from the juniors, to come on the area to get test strategy. So, everybody getting that strategy. So, um, that made a huge difference. And then, like I said, I took it to him to feel like the biggest impact he had is because everybody was all accountable. All these, all these, we all did it, we all dropped time, we all got in there and put the effort in. And converted higher school culture and saying we feel like we have investment in this. The kids feel very invested and we. So, um, last year, there's a couple of data. When we started, our average was like a ten or as well. They're not really sure we want to be, but it's a center, really center as well. Um, as we started eight minutes every week by the end, our overall composite average, that was cool. So, six twelve, so six twelve school with twenty-one, twenty-two. That was immediately improving in five months. This year, week one, we had ten. Week two, we had twelve. Um, and I am not discouraged by that in any capacity because, one, we're coming back. Two, we have a random set of sixth graders who are like, what are they doing? We had new kids who weren't incorporated in that I didn't think about. And so we had a little bit of business, it got the first couple of weeks. Now we're rocking and rolling. And two points in one week has a whole school issue, really, to keep it frozen. So, um, I really believe we can beat this game. My thing that's crossed over is for our white house, for the middle school. My school, our A T C first for the highest they've been in five years or so. Longer than this. So, I mean, that was just what we saw, the chaos of giving up, the time of week was. And then, um, once again, like I said, I need to just look back at we continued this year with the philosophy that we all like. Everybody does it, everybody does it every, at the same time every week. And teachers only know they're accountable to it. Um, sometimes the teachers are taking the quiz too, to motivate it and compare with their kids, which is pretty cool. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, good, I'm fine with you.
Yeah.
So, when you start the sixth graders or they have, let's say, testing materials.
And a green single kid getting that thing done.
And that was a big question we had when we talked to Burleyton. Because to us, that seemed like a huge thing. But just exposure, you think about the exposure and how many test questions they're going to see from their sixth grade year until their junior year. If they're going to be exposed to is significant. Now, they're going to be learning the skills on the way, but they're going to have been exposed to those tests and those type of questions.
And like, it's just one of those things that you must be exposed to part of things to figure out what you do part of things. And that's. See if you're what we're trying to help them understand. I'm not going to attend. I got one last fee, but then I can do a steward or he has to do. I mean, celebrate them, we did it. That was the other thing, we did celebrate them. So, the first time we celebrated, I remember. So, everybody, they did on this, they celebrate everyone. The next time we celebrate first, one, two, or one. Because we want them to understand that it's important to us to, and we all need to. For these, for those, so.
And I know particularly around math, those questions come up during class. And they've taken those questions and it's a challenge to those kids. They're asking, Mrs. Estes, like, how do you work that problem? Like, there's a curiosity that goes with that. But I think it's huge in the success. Like, there's a curiosity that goes with that, but I think it's huge in the success. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Burley, board members, he represents in our major five hundred Main Street. Don't know where that is, we need to see the teachers, looking at, right at Rod, three, at the. You can be wired like. So I have a pretty good view of the schools and building uses and such. And I'm not here to complain or bitch about something, but I am here to. I mean, I am here to raise an awareness of a function that is a problem, especially for the neighbors, especially the old unit. And that's just, even when the school buses, there's kind of a role that's like 10 miles an hour through the back lot. Just when it's dry like it is, it's just embarrassing, it's, you know. Where do you believe in wanting to, it's like a law. And, and during, during the lunch hours, the students are needing for lunch or whatever the person. They're kind of in a hurry and yet literally raised the duck. And it's not just the back lot, it's also that, that travel road that traveling is north, south, on the west side, much of football field. So what I, when I bring up a problem, I always like to, at least one solution. And the solution, it doesn't go really quite so easy. It's, it can be one of several different. Which with applicants that you can put down on that, one of them is like a distal it, which is basically the same stuff that they put down on the street when they're going to be like. Uh, when you call it here, it's, it's, it's going. Now they're, yeah. I don't know what the price that they got to do, that right, maybe from, it's like all of that. And now the other thing that you can do is two or three different types of meal oil, non-toxic, there's no smell. And it does an excellent job of dusting. And the third option would be calcium chloride. Calcium chloride is also very difficult to touch. You probably have to put that down, you need to eat twice this season. Once they've been made, they're in December. And get last, you've got, once you've done it, a couple of the nine, a couple of the after eighty, calcium chloride stays there. It's not washing, it doesn't, it's, it's around, it's made and bonds with dirt inside the stomach. So that's, that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to talk about. Uh, one thing that they need to have on this was, we may also want to include the pretty speaking crowd of during the class or during the school day, seeing the campus. I think they're in a hurry, they, they, they have a half hour for lunch, because they haven't really, my real title, but we didn't pay a lot of you. Yeah, you know, we see them, we hear them. And I think most of them come back, but I don't really see that it's necessary that it's being bought and leading the campus during the school day unless they're done with class, at the time, yeah, it's easy to go. But to take off and then come flying back, that all, they're behind, it's not one, yes. But that comes around rather than that was my original topic that I thought. We, we were going to fly, just before, um, with the team coming and going, I don't think we're communicating.
I'll feel very.
This is my, uh, about thirty minutes over in West Air conditioning. This might have.
Letter A, consider acceptance of donations for Farm School Day. Uh, the expectation is to accept donations for Farm School Day on October second, twenty twenty-four as follows. One B from an anonymous donation in the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars. One B from Bar X Ranch in the amount of twelve hundred and forty-three dollars. One B from Wade and Jamie Fifth in the amount of one thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. And across the thinking three hundred B by paramount beef in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. For a total donation value of seven thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents. Do I have a motion?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think this is awesome. I, I love that they're already thinking of it. My one thought is kind of dumb, it should all have your community members over there. We're not having faith in the train.
Significantly higher dollar.
And so that's how the people, like I was going to do the processing, right?
So I, hopefully, we didn't learn to grant for that.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Okay.
This is, you know, this is just, um, although it's a previous year.
Okay.
So it's all trying to get the Farm School Day on October second. So there'll be um, local ground beef counties for every student that wants them on October second.
Okay.
I'm not sure what all those, but I, I still.
We're, we're researching processes, the probability that don't know if we can, the number, sheer number that we have, eating becomes a little bit more challenging when we're talking about processes as opposed to eating. We are fortunate enough to have a little bit margin of water.
Well, thank you for all the donations, that is very awesome.
I will just want to say, I will leave a statement. Um, I will also like, do, career, and, um, I think it's a wonderful idea. Um, I hope as far as Steve is going to, um, you know, really to define that, I mean, we, we can, hey, we'll keep this process. I mean, it seems, it's, um, I certainly appreciate. And I, I just want to say that Ramona, who's been on here with Martin, she's got, um, and ending this up and getting all this together. There is paranormal labor, so it was on her part that ended all of it, so. She's doing an excellent job in grinding, making this program, um, more of a regularity in good schools.
How many each of those things be in there?
So this was um, three bees and I'm going to say, you know, like, we've only got, have one of them done. Um, but in total, I'm going to say there's probably about a thousand. I've been a quarter down there.
You have any idea like on a yearly basis, how much can a baby go through?
I can shed some, he probably has knowledge of that or can give us some, yeah, that's a, that's a good question.
If I know this, no, I'm just kidding, don't get it.
We, we do go through a lot, and the other thing is that typically the, the only thing coming in from the bodies that we receive. So um, you know, she could, she could pull that and provide that information. The other thing we can share, Kevin and I, and the group that's helping today, Ramona and Kevin did a, um, art contest. And we're going to do, um, to down the tires and just, um, kids put together some really cool. Um, things right now posters and cooks probably learn to teach us and, you know, who wants to shut a lot with you. And how do you remember, um, last Aprilish probably when we received the domain and daddy makers? That is making all of these, um, cats.
Um, and the other thing I was going to say on this, um, when we first started talking about this, Ramona was concerned about having producers do a made cattle and all this stuff. I'll be honest with you, about three phone calls, I had all the cattle we needed, no problem. Anyway, thank you to everybody. Any other discussion?
All those in favor of accepting donations for Farm School Day in a total amount of seven thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents? Please signify by standing aye.
Okay.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I, right, I do carry this. Letter B, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for contract renewal with public school works for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve renewing the contract for the renewal of public school works for district staff compliance and safety training modules for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the total amount of twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is funded through the general fund, do I have a motion?
Come on, Mr. B.
Is there a second? Right, any discussion? All those in favor of, um, except for renewing the contracts for the renewal of public school works for district staff compliance and safety training modules in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars, please signify by standing aye.
I agree.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am carrying. Letter C, consider approval of contracting with LifeBot for school safety security technology platform. The recommendation is to approve contracting with LifeBot for school safety software subscription for four hundred and twenty-three district employees and substitutes in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, this is funded through Title IV funds, do I have a motion?
Come on, Mr. B.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
What exactly is this?
So if you remember Chief Johnson's presentation on LifeSpot a month ago, it's been February. This is a tool where it should be an app on staff phones where it is also an indication of an emergency situation, but then also works as a device, you know, a five line or two. And removes the nine one ones that Chief Johnson talked about in February where our ability to take the number of nine one one calls and be inundated, um, and various malls in the season. Uh, when something significant as a school event occurs, we want to make sure that the engagement line is open and felt. This would allow us through the app that all communication lines are open, it also allows uh, emergency management to coordinate then location and all things of individual with a person or a staff member. And so it allows for emergency type situations. And if it requires, granted, we do need to get on the calendar, this is also in partnership with EDM Steve and Valley Christian.
And so does the eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-two include the train?
Yes, it does.
Well, that would be yearly, we know.
That will. We had some delays in the approval process from the Department of Education in regards to our fund. Uh, this was initially on the agenda for the previous month, but we needed to work out something in the language of the nerves and merits of the approval process. And that has been since rectified in the next seventeen.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of contracting with LifeSpot for school safety software subscription in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents?
Thank you.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I do carry this. Letter D, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for frontline educated software programs for human resources. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of frontline central software for employee records management system and implementation fees in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and one cent. This is funded by the general fund slash H R. And frontline recruitment hire software for applications and onboarding systems and implementation fees in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. This is funded through investment fund for a total purchase of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents from October first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion?
Come on, Mr. B.
Is there a second? Right, any discussion?
Is this again, any more?
Forty, and this, you know, that's just the way I can, I'm going to work out.
Without half of, each of these amounts is the implementation fee. So and there will be recurrent costs that we already paid for, um, we just brought on, you paid for the time and the end, um, time and that's just being a bit absurd. That is, um, it will, it will increase, but will it increase by about half?
I was mainly arguing with that.
And also in regards to that too, um, the recruitment piece and hiring software. So portions of that were already used into a different company of power school. It's not happening in public culture, there's actually more features and more activities, but there is some failure in reducing that.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of frontline central software for employee records management system and frontline recruiting hire software for application and onboarding system and implementation, uh, for a total amount of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents, please signify by standing aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I do carry. Letter E, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of terror microphones and meeting system. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of the shared wireless meeting system from Rock Band U P L. Production integration in the resigned amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. This is funded through investment funds, do I have a motion?
Come on, Mr. B.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mike, one question, what was the delivery estimate on the product you were on?
For the shirt?
Yeah.
I think they're about four weeks.
Well, be close, so what does it allow us to do is exactly this situation? Provide a microphone for all board members, provide an opportunity to actually interface with them, the board member. And we have the ability to have those mics and then other features that are involved in the technology and going to be able to take them not only here from where we are at at the second loss location to allow for better but sound quality and also the interface between board members regardless for Lorraine, uh, for identifying votes also. Because that's a feature on there.
It should only be used by one person?
So it is, it is, it is the, I mean, I suppose there could be the possibility of other using. Um, I have to kind of think about what other A D type situations we have, but anything in regards to a presentation that we have and anything like this that would involve a large group, we can incorporate it in any buildings at that time too, but wouldn't have to be just in, in, in board, board meetings.
So this is the question, and I apologize, but are we doing this just because we're now moving the meetings to different locations? Or was this a problem hearing with the board members were saying before?
Yeah, I, I was, I was trying to approach this even before, but this was kind of a, another layer to the app where this is. This is entirely mobile, um, it would solve a lot of audio, um, concerns, you know, both in person and uh, via the, the live stream as well, it'd be the same audio feed, uh, fed to both locations. So there would be no issues with uh, hearing board members.
So there would be no issues with uh hearing board members, you know, you don't have to push the button. Um even if you lean back in your chair, that audio capture is just of a greater quality that it will be able to pick you up. So it was it was something that was on my plate and I um kind of sourced this product. Um long before we started doing the mobile thing, but now that the show is on the road, it just adds that other layer.
It doesn't want to be my fault that you're coming to this now or you're thinking about another app?
This is a great, awful problem that we have in second loss.
Okay.
Because the other piece is a lot of times board members may start to speak. And because we've heard from a number of audience members, you forget to hit that button several times. That ability to control that, get all of that with uh staff coordinator and uh board president to be able to just. Easily handle all of those things along with we've had a number of situations that will be the app after meetings. How does so and so vote and we've had to make sure that make sure that you go back to every one member to eliminate that prospect too. There's a number of issues that were well. Give lessons about that because uh in the thick of the whole challenge.
Any others? All those in favor of approving the purchase of the share wireless meeting system from Rock Band ABL production integration in the revised amount of. Twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am very excited. Letter F, consider approval of purchasing exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of Cisco network switches and access point. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of a hundred and fifty access points, ninety network switches. Um and related installations, supplies and equipment, software licensing. And one year support in the total amount of eight hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Um this is priced through Gato and entered funded. Do I have a motion?
How many?
Is there a second?
Any discussion? So this is one of the integral parts of our entire technology. That allows us to actually. Address issues that are going to be coming up repeatedly over the next five years. Uh because we have switches throughout um. I know Mike has a much better way of technically explaining what the switch is doing within the integration with our wiring. And without these switches, we no longer have the capabilities to maintain a system. Where we're constantly using computers in educational spaces and we're constantly using them for our two information systems in front of the. And it is a quite big item, but it is one that when we choose to go to one-on-one and integrate technology into options. And when we choose to be able to uh have a lot of these aspects of all things also. We have to tease in that in our infrastructure. And this is one of the things uh when the asset funding allows us to address the effort. It allows us to look at these problems and address the long-term pieces of technology that are collapsing and the use of technology issue.
This is a one-time deal and how long does it last?
Yeah, typically you get anywhere from seven to you you stretch it out to about ten years. For your network infrastructure, so that's and these are pretty pretty good uh switches, so. I'm I'm expecting to kind of stretch these out towards that. Ten-year mark um and like Mr. Kramer said, you know, with with our increasing demand. Um we we need to be able to accommodate that that work really, so please would help with that greatly.
Without the asset advice, what do you think about your replacement schedule over years of the replacement to all of them?
Yeah, the only funding source we currently have for replacing the network infrastructure is the E-rate. Um it's kind of on a five-year cycle. You get a chunk of money over five years suspended. Um and then we would have to pay thirty percent of that overall bill. So um yeah, network network replacements. It's it's obviously an expensive pricing thing um. So with few funding sources, it's it's kind of um. It's necessary to to go after it when you can and and uh. You know, it's just we we can't you can't operate in today's world without this back on.
And not only does it piece drugs with black ops and wireless pieces, but then our spirits. Our fire, our cameras, uh door entries, all of those requirements. But not just even the calling supply. It's one of those that has to be continually updated and as we kind of saw within this building. If you start to take them out longer in years, the quality of the system starts to deteriorate. And that that creates other additional challenges.
So all the devices that we purchased up from this point, um compatibility is not going to be an issue for. No, compatible, I mean, uh these things basically will um. They can be kind of like your your highways, um so it's it's like increasing the lanes and the speed line. So by implementing this newer infrastructure, we would get more lanes and a higher speed line.
And this benefits the entire districts?
The entire district. This is this is every access point, every switch uh in every school throughout the district.
And this is a must-have, not just a wish list?
Correct. Yeah, we are we are at a point with our current network infrastructure that we're starting to see failures. So we're going to have to um either purchase them out of uh the technology budget as they break. Um one hundred percent to get them up and running or else we're experiencing outages and potential uh losses. Wherever that goes out, right, so.
The moment is probably too. So the the challenge with the funds that were utilized and even in general um. Any funds that go towards deinstallation of these devices all on that. And so that I think on the product. Mike, how many switches are we talking?
Uh nine.
How many?
Nine.
Nine. So in addition to the, how many cameras you installed this summer?
Uh right around four hundred.
You saw four hundred cameras over the summer. I'll leave the app and install my switches in addition to that. We'll have a purchase, we'll have those on, but it will be Mike and I visiting um where we are in West Bay just to kind of maintain the most thing. So we we put a lot of stress on the tech department uh the last all all summer and then I'll continue that, but they also know. This is an easier process than when we had a pool go down and try and replace them in that way because when you have to go down. I mean, we've we've gotten so dependent on our system that we need to maintain at all times. It's not when we first started implementing one-on-one acuity, you know, the teacher would have a backup lesson plan. The backup, the the need for backups happens very frequently. And so as a teacher, you're not typically able to just go directly from weather levels depending on what students and I said were available to now. One paper and so the calling the program is just about maintaining what we want to have.
Do you have a manual license? Yes, the anymore is technology and you're not going to get away from manual licensing. Um this it's the way all all technology is gone, unfortunately. Um so we're looking at about fifty thousand dollars annually in licensing. I want to say it's right around forty seven.
And Mike, is that a B rate? Is that your limit? How is that?
Yes, yes, we 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 can uh pursue that with B rate, but then we would only be uh paying thirty percent of that forty seven. But right around there. Any others? All those in favor of approving the purchase of a hundred and fifty access points, ninety network switches? Um one with related installation supplies and equipment, software licensing. And one year support in the total amount of eight hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am very excited. Letter G. Consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of district materials supplies. Recommendation is to approve the purchase uh exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of cleaning and disinfecting materials from blood, sanitary, sanitary supplies. For legal for learning schools in the amount of four thousand eighty dollars and twenty-two cents. Legal in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents. Trail in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Southeast uh schools in the amount of four thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and thirty cents. And DHS uh in the amount of one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-four cents. For a total revised purchase of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of uh district materials supplies in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am very excited. Letter E, consider approval of hiring the retirees for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Recommendation is to approve hiring district, hiring Patrice Kyle, who is special education paraprofessional at twenty-five high school for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Per district policy forty-three oh two, retire, rehire. Do I have a motion?
How many?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving uh district retire, Patrice Kyle. As a special education paraprofessional at twenty-five high school through the twenty-four, twenty-five school years, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am very excited. Letter I, consider approvals of allowing Valley Christian School middle school students to participate, continue to participate in torrented middle school athletic programs. Recommendation is to approve allowing Valley Christian School middle school students to continue to participate in PMS athletic programs. Do I have a motion? I shall move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do the Valley Christian schools in terms of that answer if there is any other support or discussion?
So we also have incorporated the local fire. And so this is very, this would actually be a review we come up with as everything brings to front of. And it's worked really well. We've been very, very fortunate in the partnership of Valley Christian. Great in that aspect, you know, it causes a number of parents uh on both sides and it's just what we do and we need. Cowan opportunity, we have kids participating, a great partnership.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of uh approving allowing Valley Christian School middle school students to continue to participate in DMS athletic programs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am very excited. Letter K, is to consider approval of authorizing district business manager to pay completed asset funding projects. By September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Recommendation is to approve authorizing district business manager to make payment of completed asset funding projects. By September thirtieth, with information presented at the October, October regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
How many?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? How many targets?
It's really dependent upon which projects we receive items for. What what we have to see as the money is said on this project. Expenditures have to be uncovered by September. We can make payments um up to December first. But it's just as clear as those that we have invoices for and have goods for. Exactly, and the board just sees has seen everything. So for instance, like um the item I for the. Itobia licensing that was under consent. I would suspect that we would have that invoice in in that would be something that would be be in pain by November. But the switches, like Mike said, um. It's a good thing for a week to get switched, it's not going to be made by this.
So just to want to make sure everybody understands that. It is for any items that the board hasn't approved, the board has approved all of it, just giving Marcy the ability, just like what we do in June, to pay for those in in that.
Yeah.
It's a good question. No, I I appreciate pointing that out because it's important for everybody to understand. That is not something that Marcy doesn't have the ability or a blank check to be able to write anything she wants and pay for us. That's only a board fruit item, but I'm working on it.
The thing is pretty obvious. Uh there, so that's a question on. So everything that has to get put in the agenda, I think there's a version that is exceeding five thousand dollars. How how long have the amount then by thousand dollars? Or is that by from today or is that our only amount that we've handled with?
That is um district directed for policy and it's been five thousand for the last sixteen years. That um you know, what what we have is to 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 regenerate. There'll be principles or myself to accept to fifteen hundred. District Kramer can approve fifteen hundred to five thousand and then anything above that um comes here to. Uh I just got to ask one question is if there's a desire to see that altered. It really would be something if he wanted to visit myself or Mr. Kramer. Um something to go to the policy committee, revise our policy and then it would come here with with two degrees.
Now I was just wondering how long it's been installation pretty soon. It's already added to our agenda. It's quite significant like it's taken years ago, I'm sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving authorizing the district business manager to make payment of completed asset funding projects by September thirtieth? Uh with information presented at the October regular board meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I am very excited. Letter F, topics for discussion. Uh this is the time for board members to seek info from each other on finding topics. Let's see on there, number one, um we have a discussion, we should have a discussion, uh upcoming superintendent evaluation. Um we're doing whether we think about sending that out.
I mean, here's what. I will probably make a recommendation once we did last year and especially getting with executive session. If that is based on the board's impact, that's helpful for you guys to have that discussion. Uh because we have not had a um we have not had a a work session scheduled for the end of this month. I will probably move to remove that evaluation uh to that October meeting. It will allow us to then to have a certain meeting in the valley October meeting. And to have that as again, I don't.
Okay, so if we're looking towards the end of this month, you kind of completed and setback to you and a lot of. Um it was a lot of time, but. What they would work for everybody to use it, especially needing to go over the evaluation. And on still of the Tuesday night. There are any either September twenty-fourth or October thirtieth, you can all those not worth it.
Twenty-fourth, there's southeast middle school football game.
On Wednesday?
Twenty-fourth of September.
It's now.
Well, the way you look at it, I got, we also have seven of the major um kinds of middle school volleyball. On that. Yeah, we, we just certainly gave a decent evaluation. There are on, funny, on the first, excuse me, there is a Torrenston High School, uh, volleyball game along with Torrenston Middle School, uh, volleyball, that. I should be, exactly. So my first person, uh, it's a speaking for Torrenston High School athletes. They're not, uh, high school, it doesn't look like the first thing.
By the time.
You're on the being six, it's thirty, very early. So we're going to six, please.
Good. I do love to make, uh, and I'm a logical person, everybody. Um, so I've discussed this a few times. Now, since I got on the board, because first purpose of trustee is later to have a fire hook, and I was trying to be really beneficial to have a little bit more in depth than the board members, but I've just got a list of things that I think would be really beneficial as a new board member, who get onto the board, that has some information of threat, where you're not just judging against these things, I haven't mentioned. And I would love to not be able to be, you know, that, if you have anything that's necessary, so they may just give some ideas, some things that I can be helpful, that I could add with, help out with, say that if we're ready to fight again, and maybe. You may be another tool, I think. Your code is personally. So your notice for the WSB. Oh, we did jump into the WSB, I have a. Sure, so. At some point, I was in the WSB meeting in Southwest. And for anyone who's not been, it is a really good opportunity to meet with other board members and discuss issues that are going on in other districts, I think is very beneficial to what everyone else is dealing with also. We don't always have to read the details, we'll kind of, for the other board members, it's a good, that would be an opportunity. Um, the key argument of that speaks to the segments that we're given at that meeting, it goes over the credit report from the state, all the financials that are pertinent to trustees, as we look at our revenue here, it goes over the advocacy agenda, which is what WSB goes back for for our schools as a legislative section. Coming up, one of the things that they recently talked for was the retire, rehire policy that allows us to rehire, retire each for some of those kinds of institutions, without various officials who kind of stay up to what they're working for as local board members. Um, but there's a lot of, it's all about QR, there's a lot of very good information to be shared with us.
And this is, this is the board members' organization, is your opportunity, because if there are items on the advocacy agenda that you, by a thoughtful vote, um, or strongly in favor, uh, please feel free to reach out to the Wyoming School Association, because um, they're only as good as the members from the local in there, and it is representative of boards in Wyoming. Uh, that, that is a key factor in there. If there are things that, you know, like within the county schools, be a part of the county, you know, possible for how that organization works and run, same thing with Wyoming School Association, part of that group, it is important that they hear voices, and they hear from you regularly in regard to questions, ideas, or things that you want to really drive home. A good opportunity for, as trustee chair is referenced, uh, networking, because at that, I've gone for the last five years, um, they have an opportunity for you to talk with other board members and then also get their contact information. So when you have those questions, but I wonder what this district is doing, and it's the southeast region, so it's not, you're not meeting with board members, uh, over in Cody, you're, you're really talking with people who are very similar geographic areas that were regularly interacting with. So it's, it's really powerful opportunity to have those contacts, and I know, uh, trustee subject is, you know, numerous call on neighboring districts too, in regards to, but we all think the same things, or similar things, and during similar, the bigger impact we talk, and board members have. Uh, we should get better at one or other possibility better.
I just, I can comment, um, fairly, uh, idea, I think it's, um, super cool, I, I hope we can, ten minutes, and, um, I just think it's, it's very, it's very, hey, you know, just basically. School board, learn, teach each other, you know, just, I'm, I'm a little, you hit together and with all the basics of. Of what you do is try to eat and mountains work, and, uh, you have a blood, I think, for one of that too, right? Medium, that's, um, and especially when you come in. I think it's really good to be, I, I tell. Take, not a lot of, turn around, Dave. After the election, I believe, well, maybe, maybe, you know, the. Best one. Fourteen. Sixty five.
Any other comments?
Can I ask, this is one question, is that related to board members, Mike? I know you were super, super busy, um, but do you have an idea when the base, whatever there are, alarms, detectors, whatever, are going to be installed? And then the second thing is, do you think there's an opportunity for Southeast, and maybe we don't know, or who think is needed, but to reapply for that grant through the hospital foundation?
Um, so, yeah, we're still working through all of our valid things. Uh, so the way we've kind of prioritized it is, we're, we're going with the things that are, that are already run, uh, from a cabling perspective, that way we can get them up kind of faster, um, because to run that cable, we have to get in the ceilings, walls, we really kind of obstructed to classrooms and all those things, so, um, we really kind of have to get spent, care to help schedule those. And, uh, for TMS in particular, every one of those base centers is a cable room. So we, I would be optimistic to say that, um, the base centers will probably be closer to November. Um, that's, that's my target goal, like.
It's south by a number.
Correct. So, uh, but as far as Southeast and, and Lingual, I, I do think that it would be helpful to them. Um, I know as a parent to a student in Lingual, uh, we've done some mention of things there that, that could help with. Uh, so I think, I think finding the funding, whether that's through the, uh, community grant or other locations, uh, would be beneficial. And, and honestly, um, for the size of facilities that Lingual and Southeast have, as far as restrooms, it's about one sensor each, and then your locker rooms, if they pursue those, um, are probably about too much.
Yeah, it's not, I've got a chance, Southeast has been there, and it's been one of my minds. It is, but it's so easy to sneak in, and I, I think it's one facility, I don't know why we're not.
We're right, all those channels here, except today has to be inspected, today we have a first call, you have to provide.
So, um, yeah, we have to, if our cabling has to fall under low voltage electrician, um, contractors, so, yes, that is, that is something we have to pay attention to. And even higher out, um, I know we, we have a, I, I think we have a, correct, wrong answer, but we have a low voltage certified, um, electrician or contractor on staff.
Um, I think I think the board and everybody else heard coming and trying to do the same. Um, still encouraging, like, can you come and talk to us, can we be meeting, like, we don't need you to stand around the room, and if you've got stuff you want to talk about, talk to us, because we want to make sure these are, like, there's something to them, right? So I appreciate all the board members from out here, I know it's, a little bit, um, but I'm hoping that, you know, as we get going, that we become a little bit more popular and give everybody an opportunity to talk to us as board members, and that's, that's the point. So I'm hoping, and I hope to Southeast, right? So where you're blue, um, for you especially, um, but I, I really encourage people, like, current staff, whoever, come talk to us, if there's stuff in your mind, let's use that, let's use that time.
This is the cool gym.
Great way to segue into days upcoming, so, future meetings, for the eighth grade, one of the good. So looking ahead, November is at St. Canale Elementary, December was requested at County Hall, for transition, and also with the, um, presentation that I had for people. And in January, um, we still have two months in a row in Torrenston, we want to go out to Lorraine, and Mr. Daley's, you know.
He's having such a theme party.
I have to tone down. So then we are in Lorraine in January, and then February, uh, Torrenston Middle School, I wanted to double check that one. That would be February eleventh. We would be good at Torrenston Middle School on February eleventh, and then March, looking at Torrenston High School, it'd be March eleventh. And we would be good, and then our last one would be April, and that would be a trip. And I would love to do it also at PRS, but I don't believe this facility, even with this expansion, I don't think we can say. So unfortunately, the casomology building doesn't quite have an estimation, but, uh, it would be good. Um, that might be a possibility done for the May ones, to just take, um, maybe at close our E degrees there, and then transition back down to such a length.
When to get outside? Do it out of time, just fine.
I mean, just, you know, go on, I don't know when I tried that for graduation.
God's gonna be about driving down to the great age, it's January, right? Power screen for the, I'm sure it does.
All right, that is. Uh, number two, other committees, the WSB and the conference, we held at the after grand, it was in the twentieth, twenty second, twenty fourth, uh, the YOY assembly is on Wednesday, it was on thirty, and groups headed, but in that time, we couldn't look at the city, so. All right. The, all on D Y.
Oh. I think, yeah, so, all right, the, one of the challenges with the August, uh, information, September information is, because it's still, still is really new this, this school year, and so, you still have a number of variables, because we do have students in seats, but we also have students that also they have transferred out, and we're still in the process of getting requests from other districts in that transferring process. So those would be there, anything in yellow is a, is less than, uh, not exceeding five students, so as you can see, Lorraine, they are down one student from last year, and so that would be yellow. Anything in green is any increase. And so we can see Lingual Fort Laramie, uh, High School, I just, those LFL has increased, Lingual Fort Laramie Elementary, Lingual Fort Laramie Middle School does have a slight decrease, Lincoln Elementary has a more than five decrease at two thirty eight and two fifty. And then Southeast Elementary has a slight decrease, Southeast High School has a slight decrease, Southeast Junior High has an increase. Trail Elementary has an increase, Torrenston High School has an increase, Torrenston Middle School has a decrease of about eight, ADM, and PRS has one, a decrease. Now, one of the things too is where they fall off in where you count students. So for PRS in particular, wherever that student takes classes, that ADM follows them. So if you had a PRS student, you have twenty four listed on the ADM, but they might have, and I can give that number, um, very easily, they might have thirty students attend, but because of the ADM, and that cooperation where they're taking music, they're taking, uh, woods classes, bottle classes, and Torrenston High School, that, according to that student's ADM, that goes on to THS, or for instance, if Lincoln and Lingual students travel to, uh, Torrenston High School for a course, that ADM follows them, so there's a proportion of students that are making, that's why you have, uh, these part of the numbers. So the overall, um, slight decrease in the district right now, in the September, August, September data from one thousand six hundred and eleven students last year, besides one thousand twenty. I already covered my summary, and I appreciate trustee chair's covering, the Wyoming School Board Association, recent meetings. Uh, you also had a handout in which is a summary of the district and the activities, uh, plan for September seventeenth, Constitution Day, Rockford District, you've got all of these schools, summaries of what they plan to do on Constitution Day, and also an extended end of the music stand, nineteenth of September, for a couple of those buildings, and the activities that they plan to celebrate Constitution Day. If you are ever intending any of these activities, always for any of the schools, do not hesitate to reach out to the principal, uh, if you know, also, if you, if, 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 if Bernie and I have talked about any of the trainings that we have, you are always welcome to attend any of those. Uh, one of the pieces that is important too, we have these projects going on, uh, if you have the interest in, in checking on these projects, it's important to have a combination of individuals going to attend, because if you're meeting individually with a contractor, as a board member, that puts you in a position where you may not be able to vote on another future improvements for as part of that project. We have a number of times where projects are improving, where we have change orders, and if you as an individual board member are talking and visiting with a contractor, and no other board members, or the superintendent has information that you may have, it puts you in a real difficult situation when being in the cap vote in that whole, uh, group. So, so if you have any answers ever to go to D and E, please let me know, we have the need to have conversations, to go and check out and ask questions, but your job as board members and the impartiality, it'd be a really, really important feature, and possibly be the one. But that's what I communicate with you. Um. Couple of things, I'm, I'm.
I think, probably, I, yeah, there, like, before we, um, I just, I, you know, spaced out, but just following up with, um, your issue as far as the factors, was, was there a, there a congestion that was, you know, for all of them, if you were wanting?
So do I need to follow up with the principals of South?
I can.
Okay. Okay.
Can be. I just wanted to. Any else come with any words to me?